I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The planning board members that are here today are Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Bate, Jorge Sonlago, and I am David Rosak, your Vice Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, current Planning Director, Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department, and Debbie Hightower, Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You're welcome to come down and pick one up. You might know, if you've been here before, noticed that the agenda has been set up a little bit differently now, so that since we read the consent cases first, we've organized them in the same order with either approval or layover, and we'll see those in that sequence. So you won't see the numbering sequence consistent down the page. At any rate, the consents cases have been recommended for layover, have already been... Oh, excuse me. The cases of the consents, as I said before, would be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have already been heard or perceived by the planning board to be non-controversial. Therefore, they will be read and voted on without the opportunity for you to state your opinion on the case. But if you do wish to have this case discussed during the hearing, you may ask us to remove it from the case, remove the case from the consent agenda. To do so, when each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed for discussion. If you do, please stand up and say so, and we will remove the case from the consent. This case will then be heard after we vote on the cases that remain on consent. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, and when you do, clearly state your name and address and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the board will first hear from the applicant, and after the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides have been heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless the board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The department will then transmit all that information to the board, as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Medias Act can be found in a white binder in this room. I don't think there are any changes to consent, are there? Okay, so we will start with the first consent case. As noted earlier, we will start with the consent that are all for approved. The first case, our first agenda item is number one, Case 2, or C-10-23-133, C-12-23-134. Applicant Drew Lear, and it's on for consent approval. The request is preliminary plat and final plat approval of Blue Stamped Prairie Second Edition, lots 1 through 64, and outlots A through F, I, and J. A subdivision inside city limits with a rezoning from DR to DR and R5. Location is 4966 Newport Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none, moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, KC-10-23-249. Applicant 275 Omaha Holdings LLC on consent for approval. The request is rezoning from GI to R4. The location is 2054 Povilton Street. Anyone wish to have this case removed? Seeing none, the next case is number five, C-10-23-250. Applicant Freddie Noel Ayayala, pardon me if I mispronounced that, Martinez, again, on consent for approval. Request is rezoning from GI to R5. Location is 1341 South 21st Street. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none, moving on. Item Number Seven, KC-10-23-251. Applicant Jerry Johnson for consent approval. Request rezoning from R7 and R3 to R3. Property is a designated local landmark. The location is 3630 Burt Street. Anyone wishing to see this removed? Seeing none. Item Number Nine, KC-10-23-252. Applicant Jay Lerner, consent approval. Request is approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location is 13750 West Maple Road. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none. Item Ten, KC-10-23-254. Applicant Joan, excuse me, Jeff Mowen, again, consent approval. Request approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location 6401 and 6403 North 91st Circle. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none. Number Eleven, KC-11-13-177. Applicant MRES Blair Land Holdings LLC on consent for approval. Request is approval of a major amendment to the PUD Planned Unit Development Overlay District. Location is northeast of 192nd and Jones Street. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none. Number Thirteen, KC-8-23-253. Applicant Ashley Karlock on consent for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow a daycare general to be located in R435 District. Location is 3020 Huntington Avenue. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none. Number Fifteen, KC-7-22-256. Applicant Presbyterian Church of the Cross, consent for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit presumed to allow religious assembly in the R2 District. Location is 1517 South 114th Street. Anyone wish to see this removed? I go ahead and read the layovers too. Okay, now we'll move to the layover cases. Number Two, C-10-23-255. Applicant VJM2 Ventures LLC on consent for layover. Request is preliminary plat approval of Bennington Industrial, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to GI, along with approval of a waiver of the PDZ President Development Zone, and the location is southwest of Bennington Road and Blair High Road. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none. Number Twelve, KC-8-23-248. Applicant Dennis Tortilla on consent for layover. Request is approval of a special use permit to allow custom manufacturing in the CC District, and the location is 6441 Irvington Road. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none. Number Fourteen, KC-8-23-264. Applicant Lance Paulson on consent for layover. The request is approval of a special use permit to allow scrap and salvage services in the HI District, and location northeast of 28th Avenue and Deer Park Boulevard. Anyone wish to see this removed? Seeing none. This is the list of our consent agenda. Any comments from...
Yeah, so just to reiterate, if a case was just read, those will not be discussed further here at today's meeting. So they will either be approved if they're for approval, or if they were layover, they will go on to a future planning board meeting agenda, whether it's next month or a later date. So before there's a motion to vote, just want to make sure that's clear. So there will only be discussion on four cases here if everything remains the same. So, any changes?
Okay. Okay, any comments by the board? If not, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve of Agenda Items Number One, Five, Six, Seven, Nine, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, and Fifteen.
Debbie, can you take the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Yes. Now we take a motion on the layover cases.
Motion to layover cases two, twelve, and fourteen.
Second.
Debbie, please take the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
Sonlago?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, as stated before, then, these cases have all been dispatched and are mean no further action today, and we'll move forward on to the public hearing. The first case we'll have will be Case Number Three, C-10-23-257. Applicant Dodge 204 LLC. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Elk Valley Commercial, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning to CC, along with approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location is southeast of 204th Street and West Dodge Road. Can we hear from the applicant?
Can I address?
We'll hear from the applicant.
The applicant?
Yep, the applicant first, and then proponents, and then opponents.
Andrew Rec, R-E-C-H, with Foley Schald Engineering, 14503 Grover Street, here representing the applicant. Here to answer any questions. I know one of the major comments is about the roundabout that's proposed there being a little too small, so we're looking at expanding that within the right of way to get fire access with that roundabout. But if you have any other questions, I'm here to answer those.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thanks, Debbie. All right, any other...
Can we ask questions, Andrew?
Just wait. So now it would be proponents can speak. So if you're a proponent for the project, you can come up and speak. Proponent?
For the project?
For the project, yes, a proponent.
Well, I'm not really a yes, but I want to...
I'm not really a yes neither, but I want to ask.
Okay. All right, we'll do that in a moment. Any opponents?
Now come up, just, yeah. Now would be your chance.
Now you can come on up.
You're the proponent.
Yeah, we'll chose the...
State your name and address.
I'm Byron Abler, 110 South 202nd Street. I back right up to the back of the, I'm in the center of the project, and this first we've heard of anything, any of us, so we have questions for the people building there and just like to get some answers, I guess. You know, I'm not really against it or for it, I just want to know some things, you know, about what's going to happen around the property, since it backs up to me.
Specific questions?
Yeah, we were wondering about lights, lights coming into our property, you know, from the back. Are they going to plant any more trees or do a fence next to our property line? Those are the major ones I've heard from the neighbors, so...
Okay. Byron, you've had no communication with any...
No, the first letter we got was this one October 18th for this meeting.
And that came from the city?
It came from the Planning Department. So we didn't get any notice, you know, from the people that are building or anything, which would be nice. When they built the storage units, they sent out letters to everybody, and we had meetings, you know, with the neighborhood, so we're, all of us are curious. I've talked to everybody, so everybody has the same questions.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sir, did you also have, please name, give us your name and address when you can.
Steve Rule, and I live on 302 North 202nd Street. And if you've got a plat, does everybody have a plat of this in front of them? If you'll notice that little, there's a nice square part of the lot, and then there's kind of a triangle part there to the north, and I back up to that triangle area. Purchased the property about seven and a half years ago. Was told that that was, that whole area behind our house was a wildlife preservation area that nothing could ever be built. Obviously, that's not true. We see that now. But I want to know if the other area from 204th Street on over to West Dodge, that's all in white, is that an area that cannot be built in again, or is that a wildlife area, or what is that considered?
We can help address those here in a moment.
Okay.
Okay.
The thing I would ask is if the fact that is an area for wildlife or whatever, what kind of a commercial property can you build next to it? And another thing is that there's about a 15-foot slope down the back of all those houses that are next to that triangle portion of that lot. There is a drain that goes through there, and when it rains, it runs water. And that portion of this total, what, five acres, I believe, that is a lot lower than the square part of this lot. And in fact, could they haul in dirt and fill in that area that runs water? Can you do that on an area that's a natural drain? That's all I have for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Please give your name and your address.
My name's Randy Wessel, 116 South 202nd Street. Again, I'm Byron's neighbor, we back up right to this. My question I have, I know that it's a steep incline if they plan on digging it out. What's going to be my view from the back door? Is it going to be air conditioners on the roof? Is it going to be, you know, block, fence, trees? That's my only concern I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, would you like to come up and answer the questions, please? And give your name again, please.
Andrew Rec, 14503 Grover Street. All right. In regard to...
Andrew, do you have a site plan that...
I do, yeah.
Could you put it on the projector?
Yeah, that'll help, I'll be...
Just so it pulls up on the TVs. And you can zoom out on the top of, yeah, that's pretty good right there, actually. Thank you.
So I guess the slope they're talking about, yeah, is on that south and east side, so we'd be planning to do three to one or four to one slopes down there. There is a setback because it'll be commercial. There's a setback between the residential and the commercial area, and in that setback, we are planning to do some tree mitigation. There's not a plan to disturb this upper kind of northeast corner, but there will be some tree mitigation that'll go on site. So the plan for replanting or planting new trees is to go along the south and east sides here, so that'd kind of be what the buffer area kind of talking about.
Would it be like decent sized trees right away, or we're not going to be looking at some sticks, you know? Just, you know...
I can't say it'll be full grown at the time, yeah. They'll be overstory.
Let's keep the communication at the podium, so we can call you back up if there's questions. That's right, thank you.
They'll be overstory and evergreen, large screening, full-size mature trees. And then...
We'll put you up here if the board have questions or staff does. Andrew, I do have a question. So at this time, I believe it's being advertised, are there any specific tenants, or is it looking at commercial tenants, multifamily? Is there a range? I know there's some general site plans that were submitted. Of course, those are not locked down in place because this is just a plat and a rezoning, so those are conceptual in nature, but do you have any, anything to share at this time?
I believe originally it was looked at with potentially mixed use and some multifamily. The last exhibit I saw was a commercial, a single commercial building, kind of an L-shaped maybe over here, but I don't know that those are firm plans. I don't believe, I haven't heard of a tenant that they're looking at. If we want examples from the CC zoning, I'm sure Michael could kind of list off some stuff, but nothing, nothing's set in stone at this time.
Obviously, your site plan, it shows one of, there's a couple of creeks in the southeast portion of the Dodge and 204th intersection. There's a creek shown on that site plan there. You're obviously staying out of the limits of that. Can you just touch on that briefly?
Yeah, absolutely. So we'll stay the three to one plus, I forget if it's 30 or 50 here, but we'll meet the creek setback at this location. And then as far as drainage on site, we have all the detention basin. I don't have it shown in there. We'll have detention in this north-northwest area, and that does account for our site as well as any pass-through from the neighborhood that currently drains through our site.
Okay. So I've got, just a recommendation, you know, this board's pretty concerned when something like this comes up, when we have neighborhood, neighbors coming out and testifying one way or the other. To your benefit, your clients' benefit, if you had a neighborhood meeting, this is preliminary plat, we get that preliminary plat, but before you get to final plat, certainly be recommended that you have a neighborhood meeting.
It is both, Mike, prelim and final on today.
So I'd recommend you do that sooner rather than later. Obviously, they have some questions. Everyone's curious, right? Whenever they see a new development coming around their area, everyone's curious what's going on, and it would certainly be a benefit, I think, to you and this board would take favorably upon that as well. So we recommend you do that.
Yep, totally understand that.
Andrew, do you know who owns the land to the north? I can't remember if it was Randy or Steve that asked if...
My understanding, I mean, we look at zoning, but I believe that's right of way.
Yeah, so I'll take the opportunity and touch on that. I was going to, in my speech. So the southern half of the subject area was always under private ownership. The, kind of the northern half, yeah, the irregular shaped piece, that was sold from the state of Nebraska because that was previously state, state right-of-way, because they own 204, basically 204th Street is state right-of-way. At some point within the last year, year and a half, the state, through whatever process they have, determined that they could sell that. So the remaining area north of that, all the way up to Dodge, and as it curves around behind the residential neighborhood, that is also state right-of-way. So I can't speak for the state. I'm not aware of, you know, them having desire to sell any other portions of land. I think it would be extremely difficult based on where that creek and drainage area is, and it doesn't, the site plan doesn't show the whole extent of that, but it does continue to curve up there to the northeast. So I would, I would find it very difficult. I would hope that they would consult with the City of Omaha if they were to pursue any further selling of the land, but they didn't with this one. So I, you know, I can't make any promises, but I, it is owned by the state, basically.
Not a preserve, not just...
No, no, there's, it's not a wildlife preserve or anything like that. It's just my understanding, it's a tree canopy area with, obviously, there's some drainage throughout it, but that it is state right-of-way.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess with regard to, you know, what you're going to see and the lights and those kinds of questions, that's, that really comes at a further time. Once this, once there's an actual site plan presented for it, what we're talking about is just zoning at this point, so...
Does the developer need to come back in front of us before, is this preliminary plat and final plat?
This is preliminary and final plat along with the rezoning. So I want to just, I can touch on the zoning. The existing site that was, has been under private ownership, that has existing CC zoning, okay? The former state right-of-way piece was not zoned. Right-of-way is not zoned. There is a provision in the zoning code that when right-of-way is vacated, it takes on the adjacent zoning. However, we have residential zoning on the east of that parcel, and it has the commercial zoning for the remainder of the site on the south. So that portion is being requested to be zoned commercially, since it doesn't have a zoning designation at this time. Along with that, we are applying the Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District, which is the MCC along 204th Street. That brings in enhanced building design requirements, increased landscaping, so that would be in place for the whole site. But no, unless there is a future use permit based on a specific use that is proposed to go on the site, it would not come back before the planning board.
He mentioned multifamily, possibly multifamily. That would have to have...
Multifamily would require a conditional use permit to come back before the planning board for approval. But as it stands right now, the plating and zoning, once the planning board recommends approval either today or in a future meeting, whatever the vote may be, it goes on to City Council for that public hearing and process as well, which you would also receive letters from the City Clerk's office. But regarding the request today, this would be the only stop at Planning Board just one time.
Okay, and I guess then we would just, again, reiterate that in the interest of good neighbors, that you would have a meeting with them and at least keep them informed of what's going on, especially all those that are right along that ridge, if you will.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, any, I guess the public hearing's closed, so...
Yeah, I guess if you have questions from anybody in the public that spoke previously, you can call them up. Otherwise, I'll just touch on a few other items. Regarding tree mitigation, yes, there has been tree removal from the site. We're aware of that. The applicant, you know, it's not something that's being hidden. They're proposing, I believe it's 171 new trees will be planted to account for that tree removal. There are certain requirements that the master plan lays out, so that is being accounted for with this request. I touched on, not an official wildlife... I touched on, not an official wildlife preservation area, but, you know, the state right-of-way. I think that's all I have at this time. There's the typical conditions that are being recommended. You know, we talked about some of that regarding Farnham Street in the pre-meeting. If you have questions, Public Works is available. Otherwise, I'll read the, the recommendation report. Staff recommends approval of the MCC overlay district, approval of the rezoning to CC, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the fourteen conditions, and approval of the final plat subject to submit of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to city council.
Any further discussion in this board? You can do that?
Yeah, you could always add a, a condition, just...
Yeah, that's your motion.
You know, the applicant would have to keep staff updated of when that is held, and that would have to be addressed, yeah.
Can I interrupt? I'm going to interrupt, just to make sure, on your, your additional motion or your additional condition. Do you want the applicant to provide staff with proof that the meeting happened, or, and/or an invitation to that? Or just to tell us? I mean, I think if you guys are going to condition something moving on for planning staff to move it along, we're going to have to have some proof, an invite, something like that, to that meeting, so just to be clear.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Debbie, would you take the vote?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Just, just to reiterate, so you guys have your, have your, your meeting, so that everybody can get their questions answered. And then some method of reporting back to planning department, so we know that the meeting took place.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, thanks.
You will be notified by the city clerk's office if you have property within three hundred feet of the site, which is the same address mailing that we use to notify for this. So if you received a letter from city planning for this meeting, you will also receive another one from the city clerk's office of when it is on city council.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, we are going to... Number five, or no, excuse me. I'm all confused. Yeah, I got the right page here. Number, yeah, we're going to do numbers four and sixteen together. First, number four, C ten dash twenty-three dash two fifty-nine, C twelve dash twenty-three dash two six-zero. Applicants to the Simple Foundation. Request is the preliminary and final plat approval of the Medes subdivision, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from GC to CC, along with approval of the MCC major commercial corridor overlay district. Location is thirty oh three Q Street. And case number sixteen, C seven dash twenty-three dash two sixty-one. Applicant Michael Holton. Request is approval of a conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC district, along with a parking adjustment for a mixed-use development. Location, again, is thirty oh three Q Street. And may we hear from the applicant on case number four.
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Holton with Airheart Griffin and Associates, three five five two Farnham Street. Here on behalf of the Simple Foundation. Just to kind of give an overview of the proposed project, it's a building additions to the Simple Foundation existing building at this location. You know, it's going to help them with their services and programs to serve the community. We'd like to thank the planning department and Public Works for all of their help so far on this project and coordinating with us. We really appreciate their efforts. Happy to answer any questions you may have. We have the architect, Dan Dozal, with Alley Point and Marketo here. We have Osman Isaka with the Simple Foundation, and then Dan Dozal with Airheart Griffin and Associates for any questions you may have.
Yeah, I have some questions for you on sixteen, item sixteen.
Sure.
Not this one, though.
All right. Any, anybody else from the applicants? That'll be it, I assume. Any proponents? And seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, the closed public hearing? Do we want to hear from you first, Mike? You want any questions?
This would be with regards to sixteen, so more sixteen, but they're together anyway.
Yep, same public hearing, yep.
Yep, same applicant. So I've raised a lot of questions in the pre-meeting with regards to the parking, okay? In your report, you indicated that you only have some on-street parking, and you're going to add an additional... I can't remember how many, I don't have it in front of me on number sixteen. But you're also going to use the Catholic Charities parking lot from time to time as well, right?
Correct, yep.
Which is still under the required, with all of the different uses of this facility now. Which, let me qualify my statement a little bit. I totally support what you're doing with, with this. I think it's great for the neighborhood. I think it's needed in that area, and you'll serve a need for that, that community, so that's, that's good. I worry about the parking, okay? So can you talk a little bit about how you're, how you're going to operate all these different units, basically? And programs, and how they're going to be structured in the way of parking's going to be adequate for all of the events, particularly the community center that gets gym, that gets a lot of use. Can you talk about that?
Sure, yeah. And, yeah, yeah, I've got Osman coming up right now to, yeah, yeah, to kind of talk about that specifically.
Good afternoon. Osman, Osman Isaka. I'm the, I'm the founder and president of the Simple Foundation. Address is one zero six three five Cummings Street. Just to restate the question in regards to operating as relates to parking, correct?
Yeah, so you've got here, let me pull this up here. I want to make sure I get this correct here. You've got all sorts of different uses of, of this facility, right?
That's correct.
There's all sorts of different uses for this. And with all of those uses, according to what we've got in our report, it's going to require... How many parking stalls, Eric?
Two hundred and eighty-seven are required by code with the reduction with the transit nearby. It's two hundred and fifty-eight is the requirement. Then you have forty-seven onsite parking stalls, sixteen proposed on the street, and then the seventy-four from Catholic Charities.
Yeah, so about half of the required parking is what you're going to have.
That's correct.
So can you tell us a little bit about all of the different uses and what you expect in the way of parking requirements for all those different units at various times of the day and week as well?
Sure.
I know you're, I know you're going to use the Catholic Charities parking lot as well, but they're going to use theirs parking lot too, from time to time, so.
Correct. They, we, we requested an actual letter of support as relates to the parking for Catholic Charity. As relates to our operation in terms of some of the services that we provide, it aligns with Catholic Charity's operation too, as relates to their food pantry. Currently, right now, that's the most, that's the most active activity and service that Catholic Charity provides the community, is the food pantry. As relates to our after-school program, we have over ninety-five percent of our clients and community, we pick up. So we have, we have buses and, and vans that pick, pick, pick up our youth from schools and from homes and to and from. So we won't have parents parking, or cars in our, in our, in our, in our parking lot. So our operating as relates to this, the recreation and after-school program is after school. Catholic Charity is not operating those hours. So that's what they were able to provide that support for us. So services after school program, I know you, you've seen academic excellence, entrepreneurship, all those programs happen after school.
After school?
After, after, I'm sorry, after school.
So you pick, you pick them up. Are you going to have any events there that bring in activities from either other cities or other parts of the city, competitions, things like that, that will bring in traffic?
Absolutely. We have, we host the indoor footsaw, which is indoor soccer, and we do it on Sunday from nine AM to, to five PM.
You do that now?
Yes.
What, what kind of attendance do you get?
Typically, both parking stall, I mean, I'm sorry, both parking areas. We have one on the north side, and the other one on the south side, pretty full.
So you have adequate parking for that now?
Yes, sir.
And is that the only event you anticipate going forward that you continue to have, or we have more events?
That's the only one.
Some expansion, I think of that too, aren't you?
That's correct.
Yeah.
So that's the only one that we anticipate to potentially, it may grow maybe five more teams as, as things get socialized throughout the city. But overall, that's where we see majority of our, our parking, parking requirements or parking requests.
And your childcare operation requires a certain number, how many employees are you going to have? I think twenty-five employees or something like that?
For, for the childcare or for the overall?
Childcare.
Specific childcare is only five, five, five employees.
Five employees total.
That's correct. And, and again, majority of our clients and community, we use our vans to pick up and drop off, and that's due to the transportation barriers and things like that, so.
So what I hear you saying then is that most of your activities, people, you transport people then, or they walk to your facility?
Yes, sir, the walkability.
But there are very few opportunities for them to need to drive in for different, occasionally, but not very often.
That's fair to say.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for you? Okay, seeing none. Public hearing closed, Eric?
Yeah, so obviously, we went through a lot of the details and, you know, the very detailed submitted operating straight statement and working with the applicant, so we're appreciative of that. And, yeah, you know, there are a lot of uses that currently take place at this site, at this time, and, and there will be more so with the proposed expansion and addition. So, you know, we are comfortable based on the different operating characteristics of, of those different uses, different times, being able to utilize the adjacent parking to the site to the west. You know, this being a part of the neighborhood and the walkability in a very dense neighborhood, and especially the south-side terrace. Of course, we've talked about that site in the, in the major redevelopment that'll occur here in several phases moving forward in, in the next handful of years. Also, the proximity to transit, bus stop right outside on Q Street, as well as the nearby transit center, short distance away as well. So I don't think I need to reiterate, obviously, we spent a lot of time on this. If you do have any questions that I can help answer, I will read the recommendation report for agenda item number four, which is...
Eric, can I interrupt?
Yeah, absolutely.
So just a real quick follow-up question. So with regards to the Catholic Charities Foundation, maybe you can come back up and, and ask us. With regards to Catholic Charity, have you received that in writing that they allow you, they're going to allow you to use that parking?
Yes, sir.
Did the planning department get a copy of that too, then?
Yes.
You've got that, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and if, you know, if something changed and that agreement went away, obviously, we, that is something that we would need to revisit with the applicant as well as this board. Because that would, that would have a major impact on, on, you know, the parking adjustment that would be, be voted on. So if there are changes to that, you know, we, we will need to have that conversation and explore that further, so.
Thank you.
So for agenda item number four, this is the preliminary and final plat, as well as the zoning to apply the MCC overlay, as well as take it from GC zoning to CC. Staff recommends approval of the MCC overlay district, approval of the rezoning from GC to CC, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the three conditions in the report, and approval of the final plat subject to submit of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to city council.
Thank you, Eric. Any further questions? If not, may I have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Debbie, would you please take the vote?
Yes.
More?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mr. Care?
Yes. Thank you, now we'll take number sixteen, Eric.
Yeah, so regarding agenda item sixteen, this is for, one of the uses does require the conditional use permit. There are a lot of uses that are permitted under the, the base CC zoning, but the indoor sports and recreation does require a separate conditional use permit, and this also accounts for the parking adjustment for the mix of uses and utilization of the adjacent parking lot at Catholic Charity site. I don't need to go into any other details, I think. There are, you know, there will be a need to go to the zoning board of appeals for waivers that are being supported by staff. So staff recommends approval of the parking adjustment for mixed-use development, and approval of the conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC district, subject to the nine conditions in the report.
Thank you, Eric. Any other questions for the board? If not, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve parking adjustment for a mixed-use development, approval of the conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC district, subject to the following nine conditions in the report.
Second.
We have motion and a second. Debbie, would you please take the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
So Longo?
Yes.
More?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, now...
Thank you for your time.
Thank you all. Let's take number eight?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, C ten dash twenty-three dash two sixty-two, C eleven dash twenty-three dash two sixty-three. Applicant Parkway Development Company LLC. Request is for rezoning of, from R four thirty-five to GC and GC to TOD two MX, along with approval of a PUR planned unit redevelopment overlay district. Location is eight oh seven South Fiftieth Street, and we hear from the applicant.
Good afternoon. Randy Kuschak with Lamprey Nielsen, one four seven one zero West Dodge Road. Here on behalf of the applicant Parkway Development, and joined today by Andrew Konzit with Konzit Architecture. The proposed site is at the southeast corner of Fiftieth and Leavenworth. The applicant is proposing to take the existing vacant laundromat site and convert that to fifty-three units of multifamily housing. It'd be a traditional four-over-one podium-style project with a mix of efficiencies, one beds and two beds, to make up that total fifty-three unit. Today, in front of you, we're requesting a rezone from the existing, for the most part, CC zoning on the site, to the TOD dash two dash MX zoning, based upon the master plan and what the future land use looks like for this location. We felt that this is a perfect, perfect use of this land with its proximity to the Med Center and to existing transit. It, it's a home run of being right on a bus route with a bus stop nearby. As part of the, the recommendation report, we're in coordination with Metro to talk to them about the adjacent bus stop and what the, the plans look like for that. With the site, most of the stalls for the site will be within the parking podium, so inside and garage stalls. We're proposing forty-four garage, garage stalls and three on-street stalls on Fiftieth Street that would occur for a total of forty-seven spaces, with the code requiring forty-two. Along with our request today, we've got a few waivers just to the size of the site. You know, it's about a little bit over a half an acre, so it's pretty ambitious what we're, we're putting on here, pushing some density. So we're looking to some waivers to some compact stall requirements inside the garage, based on pulling those together. Just with this being a parking-type project, residents would have assigned stalls, so they will know whether they have a stall that's compact or not, so the signage and being grouped together won't be as big of a concern. Waivers to the build-to setback line with the TOD zoning, pulling that building a little bit farther forward. We'll, we will also be going through a right-of-way dedication to pull the right-of-way line back to meet the urban design code. So that will put that building two feet compared to the five-foot requirement in the code that we'd be asking for that waiver for. And then on the south side of the site, we are, there, there's required screening on that side to the residential, to the south, in the TOD zoning. We have a waiver request to that zoning requirement and the screening. The intent of our project is to put very close to the code requirement there, however, with some grade changes. It's going to be a little bit of a mix of a wall plus fence, and OPBD overhead lines have limits to how high our trees can get. So we're kind of right at the line of what the code requires. It requires a twenty-five-foot tall tree. OPBD requires us to be twenty-five foot or shorter, so we're going to, you know, we're going to continue to work with staff on getting an appropriate level of screening and, and plant types under that line to provide that screening to the same distance of the code requirement, just a little bit nuanced of how we can get it. to the same distance of the code requirement, just a little bit nuanced of how we can get it accomplished in the items there. I've got a couple renderings of what the elevation of the building is planned to look like. With that, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Yeah, Randy, I have a couple of questions for you. So, pretty ambitious, you're right, pretty ambitious for that site. So, you indicated that the parking is going to be assigned parking, they're going to have, so the tenants will have assigned parking. You have forty-four stalls, fifty-three units, correct? What if you have need for more parking, and you've got three of yours off-site, I think on-street parking as well, right? So, what if you have a need for more parking than what you're going to be able to assign to the tenants there? What are they going to do?
Unfortunately, I am the civil engineer for the project. The applicant, Ryan Spellman with Parkway, had another issue come up, and he unfortunately wasn't able to make it today to answer that procedural question exactly. Ultimately, yes, there would be the issue of not being able to assign a stall for somebody in that case, and they would be forced to either utilize public transit in the area if it did have a case where there was more cars or residents with cars than stalls. It would certainly have to either spill out to adjacent parking someplace in public right-of-way or utilize public transit. The hope would be, this is geared towards market rate rents and would be geared towards the med center with commuters that would be utilizing public transit and is within walking distance of that large employer. So, I think the intent is that there's a very strong chance that we'll have some non-car users at this location.
Yeah, you would hope that that's the case, and so I guess that remains to be seen. So, I appreciate you can't answer that question, so I appreciate that. But I have a follow-up question that you might be able to answer. You indicate this is an abandoned or a former laundromat?
Yes.
So, laundromats use chemicals, right? Are you going to have to do some soil testing with regards to that site to remediate any bad soil that exists on that site?
I will check with the owner to verify if a phase one has occurred on that site. Certainly during the construction process, if any contaminated or soils are brought up during the normal construction. Typical SWIP requirements require that chemicals or anything that becomes present becomes part of the stormwater. There is a, a plan must be generated to deal with hazardous spills or wastes that are encountered as part of the typical city stormwater permitting because that could run off in an event like that.
But you'll have to have a soil test in order to know whether or not there is contaminants in the soil, right?
I'm not aware of a requirement currently to, of a soil test on my end. We do have geotechnical testing that is occurring on the site for soil borings, for foundations and soil conditions. Certainly, any found contaminants would come up in that report in the boring logs of smells, which are often the case where you can find those is odors and discoloration as you find in a soil boring log. So, there will be soil testing.
Well, there will be, there'll also be a phase one. The phase one identifies if there's anything ever been there that's at risk.
Yeah, there has to be, in this case. Randy, did you guys meet with the neighbors on your project?
Unfortunately, a neighborhood meeting hasn't occurred yet for this. I did speak to the owner today. He will be having a neighborhood meeting before this advances to council. In addition to this, there is also, it hasn't made it to this board yet, I don't believe, but a TIF request that will be coming through as well. So, certainly, the owner intends to have that meeting here before we meet for council.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Randy.
Okay. Thank you, Randy. Any opponents? Or proponents? Any other proponents?
Opponent.
Proponent, proponent, no. If it's being done, then opponents. Are you an opponent?
Opponent, yeah.
Okay. Please give your name and your address.
Yes.
Hello, my name is Kim Parker. My husband and I own the property at eight three one South Fiftieth Street. We use it primarily for short-term rental for traveling healthcare professionals. And, you know, I really care about the community, and I've spoken with most of the neighbors. And the site that we're talking about is an eyesore, and it's definitely something that I've been concerned about because it probably is, you know, it's probably something that vagrants might use or might attract people that are doing criminal activity, and so I've always been a little bit concerned about the property. So, I'm so glad to see that somebody wants to do something with it. However, I do have some concerns. And my primary concern is that it enhances our community, it promotes safety, walkability, and usefulness, especially since our particular property has healthcare professionals. I can tell you that they don't usually use public transport there. They usually, sometimes they'll bike, but most of the time they'll bring their car. And that specific area, if we can make it safer, it can be more walkable. But there's a lovely, do you guys know Syrians next door to there? It's a beautiful greenery, greenhouse, and their parking is an issue, definitely. Last summer I went there, or this summer, I guess, and the laundromat parking lot is just overrun with customers. So, to be pushed to that building so close might be an issue. You know, maybe there'll be some, I don't know. So, I guess the size of the project gives me pause. And I can tell you what will happen with people that don't have an assigned parking spot is that on Fiftieth on one side of that street, you have street parking, and I think it will congest the area. And I also wanted to ask the developers for the underground parking or if it's level on the main level, the parking garage, where the entrance and exit is going to be for that, if it's going to be on Fiftieth Street or on Leavenworth. Because Leavenworth, you're really not supposed to turn left on that and the area. And so, I'm just imagining like forty people going in and out, turning left on Leavenworth, that that would be a traffic concern. So, I was also wondering if there's going to be anything other than residential there? If there's going to be storefronts or other mixed-use types of tenants, or if it's all residential? And, let's see. And the tallness of the building compared to the surrounding buildings. There are a few commercial buildings across the street and diagonal, and those are one or two-level buildings. So, a four or five-story building would be pretty tall compared to those. So, those are, I guess those are my concerns. I'm totally a proponent for development of that lot and just having more safety, because we've had people that, like, we have ring doorbells at our property, but there's been crime, like car break-ins or things like that. And so, I really want to be a proponent that our neighborhood is safer and developed well. And if we can make it more walkable and more safe, I'm totally a proponent. But the size and the setbacks, like decreasing those, I think that's pushing it a little bit. So, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Any other opponents wishing to speak? If not, then I'll close the public hearing. Would you like to come up and address your concerns, please?
Absolutely. Randy Kuchak, one four seven one zero, West Dodge Road. In regard to the layout of access, I guess I'll start with. I do have a site plan here today. And this may answer a couple of the questions. So, we intend to have access come from Fiftieth Street so that there isn't the movement on Leavenworth Street. Just to keep those turning movements off of there is the best way to do it. So, the garage entrance is on the south side of the building, at the center of the building right here, and we'd have that driveway coming directly off. Our on-street parking is on Fiftieth Street on the east side. At one time, we had contemplated on-street parking on Leavenworth that would have gained a few more stalls. However, based upon Leavenworth Street's activity and just some of the things going on there, we just didn't feel that that was really appropriate at this location, so those have been pulled back. You know, coordinating with staff on some of that of just pulling a walkable street frontage along Leavenworth Street that will allow us to get more plantings in there and have that true green space between the curb line and pull pedestrians a little bit further back.
And the parking is going to be a garage, it's going to be surface parking, correct?
That is correct. The only surface stalls are the on-street stalls. As it relates to use types, this is planned to all be residential and uses for amenities within the development, within the building itself, not for anything outside. There's no commercial tenants anticipated or in the plan for this. And then, as it relates to, you know, spillover parking to somewhat that, it's a use that's not currently tied to the lot. And then, finally, as far as the height, we're planning to have, you know, the four-over-one that comes out to around sixty feet or so. The density of the building and the push for the building with the setbacks is related to trying to get that parking underneath. We're at such a small site that we start to hit limits of how you can fit parking stalls under a building. They need to be a certain width. And we're pretty maxed out when you consider getting our access to not come off of Leavenworth Street and to be in the safer location to get a drive around the south side of the building and then still have stalls inside the building. We were, that was a very large concern in the original layout of this, of how we could fit all of that. And any reduction that would pull us out of those setbacks and lose that waiver would lose parking stalls and basically tank the project with that access drive.
So, I noticed your parking illustration here has several compact car parking slots. So, that was in order to get where you want to go with the number of parking stalls, right?
Yes.
So, what if you don't have that many, you know, it all comes back to, what if you don't have that many compact cars that want to park in those slots? They require larger stalls.
You know, certainly, it's going to be difficult to get a large vehicle into those stalls. Some of that comes down to there will be free will of someone willing to rent the apartment. If their vehicle can't fit, they likely won't rent the apartment. They would have to have a game plan before they would sign that lease.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Eric?
Yeah, so I think the specifics were very well-described by the applicant in the original presentation and some of those follow-up answers. You know, I guess regarding parking, there is not a waiver being requested as far as the number of parking stalls. So, it is compliant with the proposed TOD code, which this area is designated for TOD zoning. So, you know, obviously, this is a common theme that's being discussed throughout all of these infill projects that the board sees and a lot of what we're seeing. And, yeah, you know, just to reiterate, you know, the person renting the unit, if there is only a compact stall, it, you know, obviously, they probably shouldn't be driving an Escalade and renting that unit if that's the only parking available to them unless they're willing to, you know, park off-site and seek other arrangements. So, as far as parking, you know, just reiterate, it is compliant. The few modifications, some of it setbacks, Randy kind of discussed on the south side. The one thing the applicant will need to coordinate with city staff and especially Public Works is just the access and the throat width of that drive aisle off of Fiftieth Street. So, there'll have to be some continued coordination on the finalized site plan before that goes to city council. So, unless you have any specific questions, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning from R-435 and GC to TOD two MX and approval of the PUR overlay district subject to submit of final plans prior to city council.
All right, any other questions or discussions from the board? If not, can we have a motion?
Motion for the approval of R-435 and GC to TOD two MX. Approval of the PUR planned unit redevelopment overlay district subject to the submission of an acceptable final plans prior to forwarding to city council.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you take the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
I'm cautious, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that completes our agenda, I believe. So, we have to take a look at our minutes from last week, or last month's pre-meeting and meeting.
Move to approve the pre-meeting and regular meeting minutes from the September, or October, I guess it was October, planning board meetings?
We have a motion, or excuse me, a motion and a second. Debbie, please take the vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Debbie, please take the vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.